Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the board supervisors meeting for Warminster Township tonight, December 1st, 2020. May we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for all our servicemen and civilians proudly serving this great nation overseas. Thank you very much. Announcements. I don't have any announcements in particular, other than I hope everyone had a safe and happy Thanksgiving. And just to follow what I said before, if you think a face mask is uncomfortable, try wearing a ventilator. So hopefully everyone's been staying safe and taking care of themselves and their family. Other than that, I have nothing, and I'll turn it over to Kathy.
I have no announcements this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Kathy, and Mark.
Come on, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Warminster Donuts, or Rosemore Dunkin' Donuts down at Norristown and County Line Road and Rosemore Shopping Center. They had a grand opening last Friday where they made a really generous donation to the Warminster PD's K-9 unit, so want to thank them. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mary?
I have a lot of announcements. This comes from Parks and Rec. So the ugly holiday sweater contest is free. Send your pictures of the ugly holiday sweaters to recreation@warminsterpa.org between December 1st and 9th. They will be posted online for judging by the community from December 14th to the 18th, and the winners will be revealed on December 22nd. Grant construction to begin shortly. The grant construction at Warminster Community Park is scheduled to begin shortly. Some trails, amenities, and areas of the runway may be closed to visitors for their safety. Please follow all signs. Dog licenses and Bark Park. 2021 annual dog licenses can be purchased at the Parks and Rec office starting December 1st. PA law requires that all dogs over the age of three months must be licensed and have rabies vaccination. New Bark Park memberships will be available in January of 2021. The Friends of Warminster Park. Hometown Hero banners are now available. Looking for a unique holiday gift? Friends of Warminster Parks continues to offer the Hometown Hero Banner Program honoring our local veterans. Banners are displayed along Veterans Way and Warminster Community Park from April to December. For an application or more information, please visit www.friendsofwarminsterparks.org or stop by the Parks and Rec office. Get your discount tickets now. Movie tickets are sold year-round. They're $9.50 each. Movie theaters will reopen eventually. They also have some discount tickets for Maury's Pier, which never expire, so if you were already planning on travel for next summer. Call the office at (215) 443-5428 with questions. Tickets are sold Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Park and Rec office at the Warminster Community Park. But there's a virtual snow sculpture contest, which is also free, January 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2021. Send your best snow sculpture pictures to recreation@warminsterpa.org. Winners will be chosen in late March and may be posted on the website. Some park reminders: The parks are open from sunrise to sunset, and after dusk, you must have a permit or risk being fined. Park restrooms and Bark Park water are closed for the season and will reopen around April 1st, when all threat of frost has passed. Please do not feed the wildlife, especially the fox, the deer, and the geese that are in the parks. Supplemental feeding encourages wildlife to lose their fear of people and become dependent on handouts that are not part of their natural diets. For more information on programs or to register, contact Parks and Rec office again at (215) 443-5428, or visit the township website at wwwwarminstertownship.org/specialevents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mary, and last, Judy.
No announcements.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move along here. I don't believe there's any presentations tonight or land use matters. So we'll move on to public comment. First round of public comment. Residents have the opportunity to comment on any non-agenda items. Amanda, any comments?
I believe there might be one in the room coming in right now.
Okay.
But there are nothing via email at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the weather, we really are keeping them on ice and complying with the governor's new restrictions.
Right.
We can only have one end at a time.
Right.
Until they're outside.
There she is.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Bobby. Sorry about that.
Bobby, just for the record, announce who you are. For the one person in the township that doesn't know who you are.
Bobby, can I interrupt you for one minute? I'm hearing that they're not able to hear you at home.
Yes, I just heard that same message I got. So the audio is not coming through right now in the meeting room? Should we take a quick recess to see... Larry, can you fix this on the fly? We apologize for the delay.
You want me to say something? He wants me to talk for a little bit. What would you like to talk about?
How was your Thanksgiving?
Very quiet, very quiet.
Yeah, unfortunately for most.
It's very much a shame.
Yeah.
On the good news, I'm hoping my daughter gets back into her house soon. So that's the good news.
Okay, I understand everything's working fine now. But one question I did have, Bobby, and I think I brought this up before, is I think our residents were very, very diligent this year, and we did pretty well with the tax collectors.
Oh, we're doing very well. We're over 98% collected.
Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you and thank the residents.
Yeah, they're very patient. I can only allow one person in at a time. Is it better? Okay, so do you want me to start all over again from the very beginning? Mark?
I would think so. If no one can hear you, I would ask that you could do that.
I'd just like to remind the residents that December 15th is the last day to pay by the personal check for this year. After December 15th, it has to be a bank check, a certified check, a cashier's check, money order, or cash. If it is cash, you must bring in the exact amount. No cash is kept in the office. As soon as cash comes in, it is brought to the bank immediately for safety reasons. I'd also like to remind them that December 31st is the last day for them to apply for their senior citizen discount on their trash. April and May was very hard. A lot of... I couldn't have people in the office, so a lot of people mailed it in. Some of them forgot to deduct it. So if you didn't, or if you're not sure, give the office a call, and I'll let you know. But it has to be done by December 31st. Also, December 31st is the last date for seniors to apply for the property rent and rebate from last year. So it's important that if you do want it, you have to do it by the 31st. And the only other thing is, when you come in to pay your taxes, you must have a mask, you must knock at the door, one person at a time. I know it's cold, but I can't let more than one person in, so you have to wait outside. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you, Bobby.
Anyone else?
I believe that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. I guess, Mr. McCauley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've got the minutes of the board meeting of November 19th. You have the... You have Resolution 2020-to-be-determined, setting and prescribing the compensation for the office of the elected tax collector for Warminster Township for the collection of all taxes due, levied as by and under its authority and applicable to the term of office of the tax collector beginning the first day of January 2022. Under the Second Class Township Code, you're probably familiar with this from big supervisors. In order to increase compensation for elected office, you have to establish the salary and then run for the position. This would be establishing the compensation for whoever would be tax collector January 1, 2022 through December 31st, 2025. Council action is in order.
Okay, so do we do these all individually? Or do we just have a consent agenda motion?
This is all part of the consent agenda, right? All three of these, the next one too?
Yeah. One is just compensation for tax collector for trash fees and street lighting.
Yeah, okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the residents?
Ms. Loftus is commenting again. She will be in in a moment.
Good evening.
Again.
I'm here if you have any questions on the contract.
No, I don't have any. Does any of the board members have any questions?
No questions.
Yeah, other than thank you for your service, Bobby, and I know this is not... This is for the year 2022 through 2025. You know, it's not a huge pay raise, and I don't think we raised the trash and lighting fee either, I don't believe. Is that correct?
That's correct. You didn't raise the trash or the lighting, and the taxes went up minimal. I tried to keep it as low as I could, considering the economy.
Yes, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, so being no questions or comments from the public, I guess we'll call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, and this is not... This will be for the next elected tax collector. Hopefully, that would be me. But it takes effect after the next general election.
That's great.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night and be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't believe we have a financial report.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a point. That 98% collection is outstanding. I don't know that I've ever worked in a municipality above 97% at its best. When I heard that the collection rate was 98%, I was most impressed. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's quite all right. And again, and thanks to the residents for their diligence and, you know, every penny helps, especially right now, considering the pandemic and some of the other things that we're up against. Okay, so, Mary, do we have a financial report, or will that be December 22nd?
It will not be until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, this is the one that everyone's looking for. The 2021 proposed township budget, this is for authorization to advertise notice of availability for public inspection. Is there a motion to authorize the advertisement?
I motion that we advertise the proposed budget for public inspection.
There is action.
I'll second that. Unless, Mary, did you want to second that, Mary?
That's a call. Whoever.
Okay, Mary, second.
Okay. Questions or comments? I mean, I can go first. This is the authorization to advertise. And considering Mr. McCauley's most recent bringing him on board, there was an 11th hour here, and I'm happy, very, very pleased to say that for the first time in four or five years, we actually have a balanced budget, which is... I'm very grateful to see that, because deficit spending is always an issue. And, you know, we'll have a better look at everything. The public will have a chance to look at it and comment on December 22nd. Any other questions or comments from the board?
I agree with everything you just said, Ms. McCallie. I'm so glad that we finally have a balanced budget. And thank you, Mr. McCauley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McCauley, and the staff. I know Kathy McGovern and Skye, and whoever else I know.
Steve Weisner was helpful. We reviewed the numbers this weekend. He brought out a couple issues. But we... The budget manager and I have started working on some of our slides for the presentation, and I promised you numbers tonight. And December 22nd, you'll have all the bells, whistles, and analysis you could possibly ever want, and we'll get into the nitty-gritty. And I think you'll have a good feel for the budget. I don't want to get into any detail. It's balanced. There's no tax increases, and we're doing a significant amount of capital improvements. But the issues that I identified in March in my report still exist, and they've been exacerbated by COVID. I wrote my report, and I did it in February, March, that the township needed to come up with a million dollars, either in spending cuts or increased revenue. And since then, there's been a million dollars in... A million dollars shortfall in revenues as a direct result of COVID. So that's a big nut, and there's going to be some real challenges in front of us, but we'll get into those at the presentation prior to the public hearing on December 22nd.
Bill, may I ask you a quick question about the COVID costs that we're facing right now?
Sure.
I'd like to know if there is... I know that we had applied for some type of funding via the county. Is there funding available to municipalities through the state, through the county, or elsewhere for the COVID?
If there is, we'll be making application, I can assure you. I can assure you that.
Okay, I was just curious about that. Thank you.
Now, Mary, or I mean Kathy, we... Mary and I, when we were having those budget meetings, spoke with Senator Casey's staff and also Senator Toomey's staff. We were asking them about that. So here's another case where your emails and letters to our representatives in the Senate and Congress down in Washington may help a little bit, because right now, there is some COVID relief. They've been talking about assistance for the states, assistance for cities and local municipalities. If they don't hear... If our representatives do not hear from anyone in the township, very much like the airbase in Shenandoah Woods, they won't do anything. They respond to residents. So I would encourage as many residents in Warminster as we can physically possibly have to reach out to their states, to their senators, in both the state and the federal government, and ask them, tell them that we're... You know, this has hit us hard. Our businesses were shut down for a long time. People were out of work. You know, our residents were fantastic in paying their taxes, even though a lot of them were out of work, and ask them for assistance at the federal level to get down to the local governments. And we'll see what happens.
I think that's a great idea.
But if we do nothing, if we don't reach out to them, and it's just the five of us here on the board asking for help, it won't come. It's as simple as that.
That's a great idea.
It's a good idea, but I think that we should probably put the links, the addresses and phone numbers on the website to tell people to do that. Our residents do look at the Warminster Township website, and they're not going to look up everybody... You know, there's only a couple of addresses they have to write to. And if we put it on the website and able to do it, this has to do with the CARES Act that they're all complaining that nobody can resolve. So the CARES Act, they came up today with another new proposed CARES Act, and some of that money in the CARES Act is going to townships and municipalities. So that's what we have to do, is get that CARES Act passed.
We must be on the same page, yeah.
Great idea, Judy. So we can get our state rep and senators and our representative down in Washington as well. We should put that on the webpage and encourage people to do that.
And we should also post it on our Facebook page too, because a lot of folks are on Facebook. The Township Facebook page too.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm all for it.
All right, let's do it. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? So with that, should we call the question?
Yes.
Kathy?
Aye.
Are there any questions from the public?
There is no public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, thank you. I didn't believe there was, but thank you for asking for me. Okay, so let's call the question. Kathy?
Aye.
Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be a no on this. I'm not saying I wouldn't be a yes on the 22nd after we dive into this. I mean, I received this yesterday with no executive summary, with no 30,000-foot view. I look forward to the ground-level view, I really do. But I can't vote on this until I get some time to review what the long-term strategy is here. I'm not saying that I wouldn't on the 22nd, but tonight, I'm a no.
Okay, well, this is to make it available for public inspection, Mark, so I... Okay, so you're a no. Okay, Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Aye.
And chair votes ayes. Motion carries 4-1. Thank you very much. And we will get into the nitty-gritty, and I'm sure the public will be... We'll have a look at this. And then I look forward to Mr. McCauley's presentation. You know, from what I see of this, there's a lot of capital improvements. You know, no tax increase, which is very, very encouraging to me, because, you know, our previous discussions with the previous staff people here had me very concerned about how we were going to move forward in the township. But this is very encouraging. So, and the fact that we're going to... There's a lot of Public Works capital budget and the park project, so this is... I'm encouraged. So we'll wait to hear December 22nd. We'll get the full scope. Everyone will have time to review this, and we'll take it from there. Okay, so under new business. So a decision is only in hearing board dated October 29th, 2020, regarding the PB Warminster Plaza considerations to take appropriate action. I will hand this over to, I guess, either Bill or Randy.
Mr. Chairman, the solicitor doesn't seem to be jumping, so I...
I couldn't get unmuted, I'm sorry.
A muted lawyer? I've never heard of such a thing.
Go ahead, Bill. You know what this is. You can go. Go ahead. I can comment. Scott and I can comment. We're good. We know this.
Mr. Chairman, I just put this on here because I wasn't aware council had authorized the solicitor to attend the... To attend the public hearing on the application, and a decision was issued granting, I believe it was a use variance, and there was a deadline for appeal. So I authorized the solicitor... Because the deadline was last week, I authorized the solicitor to file the appeal and put it on the agenda so that the board now would have the opportunity to either affirm the appeal or withdraw the appeal based on your preference. But I was simply preserving the timeliness of a possible appeal. So council action, one way or the other, is in order. I'm sorry, council, board, I'm still living in the past. Board action is in order.
Okay, so... Okay, so I know this was, we talked about this before, and I guess we need to have a motion before we have the discussion, is that correct?
Yes.
So is there a motion to take appropriate action for the zoning hearing board decision of October 29th?
Motion.
Second?
Well, is that, the motion is to, to appeal, appeal the zoning hearing board's decision?
The, I think technically it would be to affirm.
To affirm our appeal.
Affirm the appeal.
Yeah, so you're making a motion to affirm the appeal.
That is correct, Mr. Flagler.
Okay, I want to make sure, okay. So there's a motion, need a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so now we can open it up to discussion.
So, Mr. Flagler, do you feel that we have a good chance if we appeal this decision?
Well, you know, I'm not a judge, but Scott attended that hearing, and the applicant admitted that there were other uses for that property. So that is usually the standard. With COVID and what's going on now, I really can't say. It depends on the judge he gets, so it's hard to know.
Okay.
I hate to predict what judges are going to do.
Right, right.
I'm like certain politicians that think they have them in their pocket and then are surprised later on. I don't, I don't make that claim.
So this goes back to, to what we tried to accomplish when we sent Mr. Halbert to the zoning hearing board, you know, and I know Mark had some, some discussions, and we respect that, that, you know, he's a good citizen of Warminster and owns several strip malls. However, they just closed this recently, and the purpose of zoning ordinance is to control what industry and commercial type of business goes where. And I've said this before, and this has been a long time, that we hand out waivers like Halloween candy, and we felt inappropriate that we, we, we weren't, we weren't saying you couldn't do it. What we were saying was we were hoping that we would wait to see if a business would move in there. I know they take a long time, sometimes, and sometimes they don't. So, you know, that's why we appealed it to the zoning hearing board, and, you know, obviously, there were some rumors out there that there was some pressure put upon them, which, by the way, can get people on this board in serious trouble if it did come from here. So we would, we would, we didn't send our solicitor to the zoning hearing board because we thought it was a useless or fruitless endeavor. We wanted to voice our opinion. So obviously, they didn't see it that way, and we still think that, that for financial reasons is not a reason to change a zoning ordinance. And that's what we were saying, we wanted to give it some time to see if another tenant would show up, and it's as simple as that.
God, I'm sure you'll do a good representation for us.
Okay, any questions or comments from the, any other board members? Any questions or comments from the public, Amanda?
There is no public comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so with that, let's call the question. Catherine?
Aye.
Mark?
Oh.
Mary?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Motion carries 4-1. Okay. So Township Manager Announcement, upcoming agenda items. Mr. McCauley?
Public hearing on the proposed township budget, December 22nd. We'll have the proposed township budget on the, on the, on the website for public inspection tomorrow. And we'll have, we'll try to get the PowerPoint presentation that's going to be reviewed at the meeting to you in advance, December 22nd.
Okay, thank you. So looking forward to that on the 22nd. Okay, so supervisors' comments. Catherine?
I would like to thank all of our staff. I know that Mr. McCauley and staff were working very hard to get the budget out there for the public to take a look at and, you know, to review. I'm looking forward to the presentation on the 22nd. Will we be conducting workshops, Mr. McCauley?
That's up, that's up to the board, but I mean, my focus is getting, is getting the PowerPoint presentation prepared for the next meeting and, and getting a budget, budget narrative to explain what's in the proposed budget.
Thank you, and we are looking forward to that presentation. And glad everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. I hope you, everybody kept it small. It sounds like that's a good idea. Please remember, you know, try to, you know, social distance, wear your masks, wash your hands frequently, and we'll all ride the South together. And thank you, Mr. Chair, that's it for my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman, except everyone stay safe out there, stay healthy, please.
Thank you. Judy?
Ditto.
And Mary?
Again, thank you all, Mr. McCauley, for working and getting that together. For us, I look forward to that PowerPoint presentation on the 22nd to share with everybody. And please, everybody, please stay safe, you know, social distance, wash your hands, wear your mask, and we want to see everybody here on the 22nd. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I had one more thing. Mary, when you get a chance, check your Facebook. I sent you an inbox, and it was actually someone preparing for a Zoom hearing, and they have their cat taped to the wall. I sent it to Mary, I said, send, please send this to Judy when you get a chance. Check it, I just sent it to you an hour ago.
Yeah, I need to do that to Mike, you're telling me to tape my cat to the wall.
Yeah, check it out, check it out. I just sent it to you an hour ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. And, you know, I got a couple of comments that the sound was, was not the greatest tonight. We apologize for that. You know, and, you know, and these times are unprecedented again. Everyone be safe. I even understand, today I was reading an article today about the census, and the Supreme Court was actually hearing oral arguments over the phone. So, you know, this is our judicial branch of government recognizing that we're in the throes of a serious pandemic, and please, everyone, be safe, and we look forward to seeing you on the 22nd and have a, and having a healthy and happy holiday as well. So we'll see you then. With that, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening. See you, everyone. Thanks very much.
Randy, hope to see you over the holidays.